We are reconvening from a closed session with a couple of items. We'll have a report from our attorney.
The city attorney's office was given direction to initiate an action. The parties and the particulars of the action will be disclosed once the action is formally commenced.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the regular city council meeting, 7:05. If I have to have...may I have the roll call, please?
Yes.
And I guess we need to point out when council members...
Councilmember Claire is teleconferencing tonight. Gerald, do you want to add anything to that, or are you okay?
Nope, I'm good, I'm here.
Okay. Councilmembers Payne, here.
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here. Could all rise for a silent prayer, please, and remain standing for the flag salute.
Our deputy city attorney.
Hi, my name is Jose Sanchez. I'm the deputy city attorney of Galt, filling in for Steve Rudolph.
Thank you. Video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. First item, agenda approval, additions and/or deletions. Are there any?
I have none.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Item...item N4, request details from staff on an April meeting between the city of Galt and the Delta Greens landowner. I'd like to pull that item. It was actually included in our monthly report that we received at the end of last week, so I've got all the information I need.
Okay, that was N4, okay.
I'd like to pull I1. Has to do with the rent control ordinance, the market study report. Now that we've met with the park owners, I'd like to have an opportunity to go back and now meet with some of the residents and discuss the issue. So we'll bring that back at a later date as well.
That's I1?
I1.
So you're just pulling it and bringing it...okay, wait a minute, we have...
What it is, is there's a direction to the manager to get information for a possible bid process. I will provide the information and you can do with it as you wish.
Okay.
But I will provide the information.
Okay, then I would say we take no action at this time until a later date then.
Okay. Did you...you didn't have a projection of when you wanted to bring it back by chance?
No.
Oh, okay.
Not until after...
Only information, you can bring it back any time you wish.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. And there are none, so public comment?
Under Government Code, Section 5495-4.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. I will...our timers aren't working tonight, so I will give you a 30-second notice when you have 30 seconds left. I will give you a warning and then at five minutes I will tell you when your time's up. Apologize that the timers aren't working. So first, Richard Smith.
I'm really pleased to be here tonight because after two years of work, we're beginning to see some forward progress. On behalf of a lot of our people that have been working on this project for several years, we want to support the city moving forward to adjust the sphere of influence to include the new general plan north of Twin Cities Road. We are disappointed that your application cannot include the Delta Greens property this time. However, when the detailed site-specific planning and environmental work is complete for Delta Greens, a second phase expansion of the sphere of influence to include the Delta Greens project can be accomplished at that time. For the record, we recommend that your current application identify a reservation for a future Phase II sphere of influence expansion for Delta Greens. This reservation can be made without delaying the current application process or adding any cost to the city. When we look to the future of our city, merely adding the commercial property north of Twin Cities Road into the city's general plan and sphere does not mean that economic development will happen. In fact, there are no projects on the horizon that stand ready to develop in our city other than the expressed interest by the Delta Greens people. Additionally, we know of no properties in the new general plan area that have requested annexation into the city. The Delta Greens project will add desperately needed housing and economic base to support the commercial and jobs potential on the Twin Cities corridor. Delta Greens is an essential anchor project to be included in the west side of Twin Cities Road and Lagunita Creek area, a logical boundary that benefits to the city with the future sphere or many. It complies with the policies of the recently adopted general plan and certified EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. The project creates a mixed-use land base north of Twin Cities Road. This project helps with jobs and housing balance for the commercial corridor on SR-99. And this is very key because one of the LAFCO requirements is that there has to be sufficient amounts of housing to develop to be adjacent to a new area that you want to turn into commercial. The project is sustainable with reduced traffic trips. The project area will eliminate the commercial-only corridor north of Twin Cities Road and will eliminate the treatment plant, prevent the problem. It will all be part of the city. The project conforms to SB 375 principles and does not create leapfrog development, which we're all opposed to. The project provides economic base for commercial growth downtown. The project does not impact the east side's traffic sewer and drainage infrastructure whatsoever. The project will also provide fire and EMT services to the Galt area west of the railroad tracks. I thank you for listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dex.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next speaker, please.
Carl Bonar.
Good evening, I'm Carl Bonar, resident of the city of Galt, and we would wish to commend the city council in moving quickly, applying to LAFCO to amend the sphere of influence to include the new city general plan and to enable annexation of these lands into the city. Also, we are pleased to hear that the initial agreement between the landowners and the developer has been reached for the Delta Greens project. The city has agreed that the first order of business will be for the developer and the city to enter into a pre-annexation agreement. This pre-annexation agreement will provide for the preparation and processing of a general plan amendment, a specific plan and environmental impact report, a sphere of influence amendment, and subsequent annexation. When this work is completed for Delta Greens, we will be back here before your city council supporting the council's subsequent sphere of influence and annexation to LAFCO for the Delta Greens project as well. As with your current application to LAFCO, the future sphere of influence for Delta Greens should be reserved by the city as a Phase II sphere of influence expansion with your current application. The future Phase II expansion will be supported at that time by a general plan amendment and certified environmental impact report. In the meantime, we want to become more active with the city and the city's participation in the county's development of the South Sacramento area with the Habitat Conservation Plan. As a stakeholder in this regional plan, the city of Galt would want to partner...the citizens of the city of Galt would want to partner with the city in protecting the city's right to make land use decisions over the Delta Greens property. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Jason, do we have...we have indication that there is a developer that's been selected for that property?
Yes, staff received some indication this last week that the landowner and a developer have some kind of tentative agreement. My understanding is they're still working on the formal agreement, at which time they would come back to the city with the developer to enter in discussions with the city as far as what a pre-annexation agreement might look like.
Who is the developer?
Louis Operating Corporation. Is that who was it again? Louis.
Louis what?
Operating.
Operating. Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's all I have. Everyone else is under a specific item.
Oh, okay. Okay. Our next item is Information Consent Calendar. If you would read those items, please.
Number one, approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of April 27th and the special and regular meetings of May 5th, 2009. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. And number three, approval of a proclamation recognizing Older Americans Month.
There are motion for...
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, passed. Next item is presentations. Older Americans Month. And Pam?
One more.
We have a proclamation, city of Galt council...I'll get this right in a minute. City council of the city of Galt recognizing May 2009 as Older Americans Month. We do hereby proclaim and we to be...we do proclaim May 2009 to be Older Americans Month. We urge everyone to take time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, the family members, the citizens who care for the older adults. We urge all citizens to work together to strengthen the services. Sacramento County provides its older adults with ways that will recognize the changing nature and their needs and that provide older adults with more opportunities to make informed choices about their lives. Our efforts can improve the lives of our older citizens and help pave the way to future generations. And this is signed by all the council members.
I would like to honor the local...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sheldon and city council members. I am Pam Floor from the Adult and Aging Commission of Sacramento County, and I'm honored to be here to accept that rather wordy proclamation. I'm sorry, it sounds like it was written by lawyers.
I'm pretty sure it's part of it.
The commission sought nominees from around the county to honor as outstanding senior volunteers, and there was a senior chosen from Galt area. Is Georgia Giger here? And I'm going to embarrass you by reading what was said about you, which is wonderful. The Board of Supervisors held a special awards ceremony on May 12th, and each senior that was honored received an award and a handshake from their supervisor, as well as a handmade quilt that was donated by other seniors. So it's kind of a circle, people helping people. And this is what Supervisor Mutoli read about Georgia. You want to stand and we'll honor you. Georgia is an indispensable volunteer for Southern County Services and the community of Galt. She volunteers for both Brown Bag and Commodities Program and is a medical transport driver available at a moment's notice. She is always part of planning and implementation for the Christmas basket giveaway, our volunteer luncheon, and the senior gala dinner. Georgia is also an integral member of the focal point committee. These provide special services for seniors. Those benefiting from her work have said the volunteer services she provides are some of the most thoughtful things anyone could do. So I commend you for having such a citizen in your community, and I ask you to honor all the seniors. And without senior volunteers, I imagine your city, like the rest of the country, would be hard put to meet all the expectations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam. Thank you, Georgia. While Pam is getting her picture taken by Al, I'd like to say that I enjoy serving with her on the Commission on Adult and Aging. And she's usually a little more outspoken, but I think she's like some of us suffering from allergies. But it's wonderful that she came all the way to Galt to make this award to Georgia, and I wanted to say thank you, Pam.
The next item we have is a certificate of recognition for John Novak on the Commission of Aging. John, would you be able to come down to the podium? And Barbara, could I ask you to read off?
Sure.
Thank you.
More than happy to.
I mean, you know John more than...
It is indeed a pleasure to recognize this gentleman who has given so much of his time and would continue if his health would have allowed him to be a member of the local commission on aging. I'm going to read this proclamation for recognition. With this certificate acknowledging his outstanding contribution to the senior community of the city of Galt, spanning five years from August 2004 through April 2009, in recognition, the Galt City Council offers its thanks and appreciation on behalf of the citizens of Galt. John, thank you so much. Would you like to say your name?
Oh, oh, okay. We'll do this.
First, I would like to thank the commission for allowing me to be on the Commission on As it said, my health at times prevents me from doing what I would like to do, but I hope to continue to be active. I believe it is a responsibility of every one of us in Galt that live in Galt to help it make it a better place for our children. And again, I just, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank all of you.
Thank you, John, for your many years.
Thank you.
You know, he's...
Thank you, John.
He didn't share all the hours and things that he has done for this community, and I don't have the list, but there's no way that I can let you know how much this gentleman has contributed to our community through the years. So, John, we hope to have you stop in and help us now and then, whenever you feel like it.
Thank you, John.
If I could read that off?
Communication, you're in communication?
I'm sorry, communication.
Communication. Councilor Meredith?
Thank you. I hate to have to talk about topics like this, but I got a couple phone calls in the last few weeks about a comment that was posted on a local website forum that said, "At the last council meeting, Andrew made a comment about moving out of the city next year so that he can't be on the council and not live on the city. I want to clarify that I am not currently constructing a home in the county. I still live in the city of Galt. Building a home in the country is something that my long-term plans lead me to doing, but I think all of you know that with the economy the way that it is, building a home and going through a construction loan while you're still paying for an additional house just doesn't make sense. And I'm a single-income family. My wife's a stay-at-home mom, so it'd be extremely difficult for us." And I think Mr....our mayor here, Mr. Sheldon, is the fire marshal in Wilton, where I own property, so he'll be one of the first people that looks at my building plans, so I think he can attest to the fact that he hasn't seen any come across his desk.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. The second item I have, I just wanted staff to give an announcement to the community regarding Congressman Lundgren and what he was able to do for us on the Central Galt and Twin Cities interchange projects.
I'd like Greg, Greg's the individual that spent most of the time with us, and it's his efforts that brought us to this point.
We submitted two requests, one for $5 million for the Central Galt Interchange and one for $3.8 million for a new project at the Twin Cities and the interchange to do interim roundabouts at that location. We were very lucky and successful. Both these were passed forward by Congressman Lundgren to the appropriation committee. This is part of the new transportation authorization. We're over the first hurdle. We could have been knocked out of the race. We still haven't been funded yet, but at least you made it over the first hurdle.
I'd like to add that we did send a letter. It was under my signature, but thanking him for...and you for doing a lot of work, so...
Congressman Lundgren at times has been hesitant about requesting earmarks and funding for projects because that's part of what his political philosophy is. So for him to step forward and do this was extremely...was extremely a great sign of support for the city.
Just a comment, and I agree with Councilman Meredith, he is very particular, but he and his staff came here a couple of years or so and spent almost a half a day on the C Street interchange. And if he sees something that is very important and needs to be done, he will put his weight behind and support. I think it bears to Greg's work that he's actually included both. We may not get both, but just to get him to be considered is an accomplishment.
Yes. Thank you, Greg.
Can I do have a speaker sheet? Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt. And since I saw my name on the agenda, I thought, gee whiz, what's going to happen? So very nicely, Andrew, he brought it up that I must have entered something on the form because it said a comment by Al Baldwin, and I did enter it on the form because I heard it at the council and people were asking me, and I just thought I'd put it out there. You can look at it on video and you can see it. But I do appreciate you bringing it up and letting people know that my comments are well-taken, and you did a fine job in explaining it, and I appreciate that. And if there's any more questions you'd have about any comments I made, believe me, I'll be more than happy to explain them and talk about them and do anything else. But, you know, I was looking forward to having you getting in a new mansion and a house and be happy and raise a family. So it was kind of a good news for me. And anyway, just thought I'd say thank you, and I appreciate it. And if there's no more comments about what I said, well then, thanks again.
Thank you, Al. Now, scheduled matters.
Now we're...
Jumped ahead.
Okay. Subject, time extension for interim urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt prohibiting the establishment and operation of medicinal marijuana dispensaries.
Staff report.
This item was first considered by the council on April 27th. At that time, the council opted to extend the urgency interim ordinance for a period of 24 days, not the requested 45. There was concern that there had been a lack of notice under the provisions of introducing this ordinance, which is the purpose of the public hearing tonight, to consider extension of this ordinance for a period of 10 months and 15 days. That's what the statute allows the council to do. During that time period, after receiving direction from the council, staff would evaluate those alternatives or the alternative the council would like to see pursued. Staff would prepare a report. That report would have to be reviewed by the planning commission and then ultimately brought back to city council for final adoption. You have pretty much the same staff report from the last meeting. There is a discussion on the Compassionate Use Act, which was enacted in 1996, state of California, which permitted patients and primary caregivers to possess and cultivate marijuana. Some of the conflicts with the Federal Controlled Substance Act are identified between that and the state law. Then there were some cleanup provisions enacted by the legislature under the provision of the medical marijuana program under SB 420. Each one of those are summarized in the staff report. You also have information as it relates to how it is generally perceived from law enforcement agencies in the state of California and the secondary impacts associated with medical marijuana dispensaries, which include...they've seen increases in marijuana DUIs, near dispensaries, loitering near and around dispensaries, robberies at dispensaries, complaints from surrounding businesses, as well as neighbors, to name a few of the issues. The...as far as it relates to the city of Galt, city of Galt does not identify medical marijuana dispensaries as an allowed use in any zoning district or classification of the city. In evaluating the code, it would appear that the only appropriate method would be to amend the code to either address it affirmatively or to have it as a use which is not allowed in any particular zoning district. Or as identified in some of the alternatives identified in your staff report, you could have a partial prohibition, you could have a special use permit, you could have it allowed with specific development standards akin to those which are required for adult use businesses in the community which are required by law to be allowed, as well as any other direction the city council would like to give us regarding this topic. So we look to the city council here tonight for direction and hopefully extension of the interim urgency ordinance for a period of 10 months and 15 days in order to accomplish council's direction.
Okay. Thank you, Kirk. I think we need to go into an open public hearing. You guys want to...council members, you want to hold your questions, comments? Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Do I have any speakers?
Yes, Jean Calvert.
I've lived here for 26 years. I'm a medical marijuana patient. I've been down here before when the first moratorium was put in effect, which was, I believe, about four years ago, something like that. I don't understand what the fear is of people getting their medication. I don't understand the discrimination of Galt to say... I don't understand the discrimination of Galt to say that they're illegal when state law says they are legal. I have dealt with the police in this city and really been wronged by them because of my personal choice to use medicinal marijuana as opposed to more pills. I don't know what you guys think it's about. Is it kids that you're thinking of, that we're giving it to kids? The kids are giving it to kids, not us, not the dispensaries. You have to have a recommendation. There are, there are rules to a dispensary too. By not allowing, not even one is discriminating against anybody in California that has a medical marijuana license. You guys might wanna ask me some questions, 'cause I don't wanna really lecture. I would like to know what, why you are so afraid of this.
Jean, which dispensary do you go to now for your-
I do not.
You don't, you don't go, so-
No, I do not. I grow my own.
You grow your own, okay.
And I've had Galt police at my house many times.
Do you have a medical marijuana dispensary card, a medical marijuana card?
No.
Okay.
I have my doctor's recommendations, which is from Better Health. I have Fibromyalgia. It is, my case has gone up to the DA from his police officers coming into my house to make sure that I'm in compliance without a warrant.
Can I ask you just a general question about medicinal marijuana?
Sure.
Someone that has a card to utilize medicinal marijuana that doesn't go to a dispensary because it's not located locally, where would they typically get the medicinal marijuana?
Off the street.
Off the street. So, in your opinion, legalizing the dispensary here in the city of Galt could curb some of our illegal drug-
Teenage use, yes. Like, quite a bit, like, quite a bit. I think that this town is so conservative that it went backwards. We're not dealing with the issue. And it is, it is state law. Federal does not trump state. That's just come out. You know, I don't know why I wasn't even, I wasn't even notified about the second moratorium that was done. You know, I'm the only person that has ever come down here. I, I've suffered many losses through this. You know, it cost us ten thousand dollars to get out of it. It took, it destroyed my children's emotional state in this city because they were wrong, you know? I'm here to stand up for the patients that are afraid to walk in these doors, that are scared to come up here. And look at you guys. I mean, yeah, I'm shaken, but I'm here, you know? It's legal. Talk to the DA. He knows my name. He talked to my doctor. He talked to my doctor, and your police officer had to back off and apologize.
How many medicinal marijuana patients would you estimate that there are in the city of Galt? Do you know any others?
Oh, I know some. I do know some. I know quite a few adults. I know a hell of a lot of kids. And I don't like it with the kids. But it's coming from the kids, not adults to children. You can, you can ask patients here in town. They can get better pot from the kids than they can get from the clubs.
Where's the closest medicinal dispensary?
Sacramento.
Sacramento. How many do they have there? Quite a few?
They have twenty-six now, I believe, which is way out of line, way out of line. I have no problem with regulating things. I have no problem with laws, but if I'm gonna have to go buy them, so should everybody else.
If a dispensary were to open in the city, would you stop growing marijuana in your own backyard? Or would you?
Would I personally? I don't know that, sir, because I believe in what I'm doing. I mean, I don't know, I don't know enough about running dispensaries yet, but I figure, you know, I'm, if anybody opens one, I should be the one. I've suffered more. My family has paid for this already, you know? I'm legal. I don't worry anymore because officers can come to my door any day, any day.
This is our community development director. He runs-
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I, I thought it was an officer. The last one that was there was an officer when I spoke. I'm sorry.
He's used to it, don't worry about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was here when Doug was still running it. And, huh? Oh, I know nobody's Doug. But I, I don't, you know, the action that was taken was when we did not have a police chief. And these guys had my name. They had my name. They came to my house because a kid called cops on me for smoking pot in my own house. And they came to my door, showed them my recommendation, and they still came back to make sure I was in compliance with the law. I call that harassment, you know? Yeah. I'm sorry, my personal stuff is getting in here. I'm here for the other patients that can't grow, that don't have the physical ability to do it or the knowledge. It does take help. I personally can't do it. My husband does for me. And to find that you guys are unwilling to have any option besides growing it for yourself and getting in trouble and having them walk in whenever they wanna walk in, which they're gonna do, or you can give them a dispensary. You guys could make some money out of it and keep it out of the kids' hands, a lot more, a lot more. And the robberies, you know, that's, there are very few robberies that they actually, the ones that are run properly, because they have security. They have their own security to make sure that if they're robbed, they have somebody to take care of it, you know? I don't know what else to say. Do you guys have any one question? No?
Thank you.
I hope it didn't kill it, but I'm sure it's dead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? If there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments from council members?
I have a few.
Barbara?
You know, I wanna say that for someone who's using marijuana for medicinal purposes, I don't argue with that fact at all. We have some information from our police chief giving us some education on what happens when you have dispensaries in your community. I think we demonstrated our support and our concern for our police department with Measure R that was passed. And it was passed with the idea of fighting drugs and gangs. And then to take the risk, and I see it as a risk because no matter what the issue is, you're gonna hear pros and cons, but to take the risk and have dispensaries in our community, I'm not ready to do that. I don't wanna see Galt a destination for people to come to to purchase their marijuana. I do have concerns about what does happen around those dispensaries. And, like I said, I have information that our police chief has provided us for educational purposes. So, I, I guess I'm just not willing to put our small town in the position of having to deal with something when we're struggling to have enough policemen to deal with what they have to deal with at this point.
Any other comments? Daryl, did you have anything?
No, I, I'm not, I don't want that to end up here either for many of the reasons we've discussed before. So, I'll be supporting the recommendation for now to extend the timeframe. So, that's really all I have on-
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council members?
Yeah, actually, I've had the, I've been fortunate enough, under, you know, under my current job, I have been to this, to these marijuana dispensaries. And we should be very cautious about wanting to have one here in the community. One of my first concerns would be is, you know, we might see the attendance here at council go down. That could be a concern I might have. Some of the problems when, when I look at this, and some of the problems you face is that this industry really is not properly regulated at this time. There's a lot of unknown answers. You know, the process of distribution of the marijuana itself is somewhat of a concern of mine from the point that, you know, the seed is planted all the way to the point that, you know, makes its way to the dispensary. I don't, I'm not gonna argue with Prop two fifteen that legalizes marijuana for the purpose of, for medic, as medical marijuana. And my biggest concern is whether or not it's a good fit for Galt, and that's really what it comes down to. I think that this issue of a dispensary here in Galt will, would actually be very limited to any location you can actually put it in. And you really would be restricted at best to our industrial park. And that would be the only place you could actually fit it. So, even at that, there is an issue. And as you heard earlier, these dispensaries are very unique. I mean, I've been to these, and I've been inside them. I've seen how they operate, and I've talked to people who've run them. You've got bulletproof glass, you've got guards at the door. Their customers have to be escorted from the point of purchase to the point of their cars. The reports that I've read, coming from, whether it be the sheriff's department or other policing agencies, but also from the mouth of the operators themselves will tell you that they've had a problem with crime. And, and, and it's a reality. It's a fact, you know, it's a fact that these dispensaries currently, is the way they're operated, they do tend to draw crime, whether you, you know, you think so or not. And that's the reason you have the security guards there. That's why you have armed guards at these places of business. I mean, they've had problems with people being robbed at the, you know, location, people being followed home and being robbed. You know, the owners themselves have been robbed. Those are a lot of the problems that you have. One of the other issues that I have concerns about is 'cause it is not properly regulated, is the quality of the medical marijuana you're talking about. There's right now, I know of any, no guarantee out there to say that this is properly, that it's properly made and, and it's, it's gone through the process so that when it reaches the end buyer, that it's, it's not tainted in any way, shape, form, or another. And I have to believe that, in my own opinion, is that something like this really should be handled through perhaps a pharmacy or a professional, not somebody who does this on their own. So, you know, I mean, some of the other issues I've heard tonight, I, I just, you know, I can't support this. I think there's too many unknowns here. You know, the issue isn't for me whether or not I agree or disagree with the idea of medical marijuana. It's whether or not a dispensary belongs in Galt. And I think with all the dispensaries that are out there in Sacramento County and other areas, I really just don't see the need to have one here. And I'm, I'm gonna support staff's recommendation.
Just have a few comments. I, I respect the concerns of my fellow council members in regards to crime and the likelihood that a dispensary could draw a crowd. But I wonder, when we, when we start voting on the big-box stores that are proposed for the city of Galt and we hear about all of the crime that is affiliated with those types of places, are we gonna take that into consideration and just completely shut the door on those? I would dare to say that we're not gonna do that. The voters of California spoke on this issue. As I said at the previous meeting, I feel it would be irresponsible for the city of Galt to overturn the voters of California and what they voted for. I do think that there are locations here in the city of Galt that we could place one of these dispensaries. Medicinal marijuana has a therapeutic value to patients that are suffering from diseases like AIDS and from ailments like cancer. And I think that patients are entitled to the best possible care for their ailments. So, I would prefer that the city of Galt move forward with a zoning restriction that would put these types of dispensaries in our industrial park.
Hey, Andrew?
Yes.
You've said twice that we have overturned the voters of California. Did the voters require Galt have this or just said we could if we wanted?
They said that Californians had, had the right to utilize medicinal marijuana, Daryl. That's what they said.
Okay, we haven't undone that?
Well, we're putting roadblocks, Daryl, to prevent patients from getting their medication. And we're also, we're also steering them toward the illegal drug dealers in the city of Galt to get their medicine, so.
Okay. Well, I agree with council members Payne, Claire, and Haynes. And I believe that allowing the dispensaries just sends the wrong message. I just wanna add that. So, I will ask, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move. We accept staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made. We have a motion on the floor, ma'am, and seconded. Are there any other, any further discussion from staff or council? Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you one more time to please refrain. You can go outside and you can speak to whoever. Thank you very much.
Just for point of information, and maybe the attorney will come in, even though the voters approved that California may, there still is a legal question from the federal government that has to be resolved because the federal government has not approved it.
Well, I think the Obama administration did clarify, though, that they would not go into states that have legalized medicinal marijuana and prosecute patients or owners and operators of dispensaries.
Okay, motion's on the floor. It's been seconded. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no.
Aye, pass. Four to one. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Next item.
For clarification purposes, did that include directing staff to proceed with an ordinance permanently disallowing? Or is that gonna be a separate vote?
Is that a separate?
The way the staff report was set up was that the first, the first recommendation was to extend the moratorium. The second recommendation is for direction, and the recommendation there is for staff to proceed with an ordinance which would prohibit these types of uses. So, I, I recommend, in order just for the minutes to be clear, that the first motion was for the first recommendation, which was to extend the moratorium for a period of ten months and fifteen days.
Okay.
And for the record, I'll also move recommendation number two.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no.
Aye, four to one. Thank you for the clarification. And we'll move to ordinances?
Uh, what ordinances? The item was pulled under the regular calendar.
Right.
So, that takes us to the redevelopment.
You're on city manager's office near its regular calendar.
I'm sorry.
Misitem. I won. No, it wasn't pulled.
Yeah, it was pulled. Oh, yeah, that's right. You said you wanted-
You can't, you can't pull my report.
Even if we want to. Okay, go ahead.
Even if, even if you want, it's a direction of the council.
You're right.
On May the fifth, the council directed that we do some research in hiring a consultant to do a rent stabilization study. I used the services for the League of California Cities Listserve. I found actually two firms, and later I found a third that do this type of work. The first two were David Paul Rosen and Associates from Oakland, and they did one for the city of Banning. And then they did, found one, Mr. Thomas Kerr, Inc., who performed a market analysis for the city of Encinitas. Either of those could do it, and then there was a third. Both of them indicated that the range of the study would be somewhere between twenty-seven to thirty-two thousand dollars without legal review. So, if there was a legal review, that cost would have to come up on top of it. I talked with Mr. Rosen for quite a while, and he indicated that when they do the area of interest or the area that they would compete with, would probably include low di and elk growth. You have to have a certain area to do that. So, that would be about approximate area. And if the council wished to do it, we would have to put out an RFP, and they would actually bid for those services. I gave a copy of the Banning study to show how much was involved in it. I think it is typically- I think it is typical of the study that the city would have to have and that would show the information that you're seeking. And with that, it's up to the council to decide what they wish to do with the information.
Ted, since we're on this topic, um, that, that report that none of us wanted you to give, I guess. Um, we did have a meeting last week, uh, our city manager, Ted Anderson, was in attendance, as was our city attorney, council member Haynes and myself, and about twenty-five representatives of the park owners. And, uh, something that came up during conversation on how we could keep these fees lower for the residents and what type of, what types of fiscal liabilities, uh, fall onto them that they have to pass on to their, their residents, their tenants. We got into the conversation of our garbage contract and one of the park owners actually made a comment that his park goes out to each individual trailer and picks up the garbage and then transfers it to a dumpster that our waste carrier picks up and dispenses of. What he told me was that his residents are still being charged based on single family despite the fact that cow waste is not actually picking up their trash in front of their home. So, just for, uh, for our informational purposes, Ted, can you?
Maybe in your closing remarks.
Yeah, but here's what the issue was, is, is that the reason that, uh, they don't pick up is because they asked them not to drive down the roads because the roads that were constructed in the Mobile Home Park would not support the weight of the truck. And so, the issue was a direct, uh, uh, direction from the owner to the garbage. They would, they would go out and pick each one of them up, but they refused to allow them to go down the roads because of damage. The cor- the correlation to that would be is, is if, if somebody had done a subdivision and done very poorly roads and said, "No, we don't want you on it," then they could stop them.
I'll bring back some more information.
Kinda off the item right now. You could continue that in your closing remarks though.
I'll, I'll bring back information.
Okay. Now, we were going to adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board members, Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Felton?
Here. Hold the comment.
I have my speaker sheet.
Okay. Information consent and agenda items, we have two, would you read those please?
Yes, number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of May fifth, two thousand nine. And number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrant.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City Clerk's report.
Okay, at this time, um, due to the resignation of John Novak, we have a, an alternate position on the Commission on Aging. Um, we had two letters of interest that were not selected at the last, um, go around. We did contact them, they are both still interested in serving. Um, they are Darla Klooster, I believe, and Alana Conick. I hope I pronounced those names correctly.
I would like to nominate Darla Klooster.
Second nomination.
Agree? I agree.
Yeah, I'd feel that they're both qualified. So that's, a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
We'll deal with the happy news.
Are you Mrs. Klooster? There's someone in the audience, I think.
I'm sorry, was there someone in the audience who wanted to speak?
No.
No? Oh, I'm sorry. Staff comments?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Campkin has comments and Mr. Berman has comments.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Payne had asked that, following- Oh, I'm sorry. The Councilmember Payne had asked, Mr. Mayor Payne had asked that, uh, staff provide a, just kind of an update on how code enforcement addresses weeds and, um, rubble in the city, um, separate from how the police department, or how the police department, how the fire district, uh, addresses it. And just to kinda summarize, um, I'll start with, with the fire district. The, the fire district gets involved principally on vacant lots in the city. Um, that starts at about May first of each year. Uh, they'll send a notice to property owners and they have a list and then they'll also identify additional properties when they go out and survey the properties. Or if complaints are made to the city, we forward those to them as well. They notify the property owner, basically give them thirty days to, to make sure that they have abated the property by June first. If they haven't abated by June first, they will, if they are not on the list, they get another notice which gives them fourteen days. After that fourteen day period, um, they can issue a citation if it has not been abated. Generally by then, as George indicated that night, people have complied. Uh, if they don't, the contractor goes out, cleans the property, property owner is billed. There's either, bill's either paid or tax lien is then put on the property. For those that are on this list, they get one notice and if it's not done by June first, they go out and the property's abated and they get a bill. Now that is just during the fire season. The city of Galt used to do that same procedure, uh, up until the time of the merger. Now, this is four or five years ago. Code enforcement did all of the, the fire, uh, notices as well. The difference is that the city, uh, we have two provisions in the municipal code. One is the property maintenance, uh, uh, section. The other one is the vacant land and building section. Under both of those, the code enforcement officer has the ability to, uh, address issues such as weeds and/or rubble or blighted conditions in general. Um, the definitions are laid out in the municipal code. There's been a process by which the code enforcement officer is to, uh, address these complaints, either on a complaint basis or on a proactive basis. When he's out driving around, he sees a property that is, uh, in disrepair or in, not in compliance with the code, he'll make a stop, provide a notice. Under the property maintenance, uh, provision, the, the property owner, um, if a complaint is made in that case, uh, there's generally a follow-up, uh, site visit made. Um, and this can be on weeds that are green and two or three feet high. They have to be, if it's a, uh, and I'll get to foreclosed homes because that's kind of a separate specialty. Uh, if they are over, say in the front yard, over a foot high, over fifty percent of the lawn, then that's in violation of the code. He will go out, hopefully if the property is occupied, uh, he'll make contact with the property owner, provide a courtesy notice. They have thirty days in which to comply in order to bring the property into compliance, whether it's weeds, uh, rubble, or trash. Um, at the end of that period, he'll make a reinspection and I would say probably ninety percent of the time, he achieves compliance with the first visit. If not, he can then issue a citation. Uh, oftentimes, uh, and that citation is an administrative site. Uh, the first infraction is one hundred dollars and it goes progressively, I think, one hundred, two hundred and fifty, five hundred, and ultimately to a thousand dollars. And each site visit can constitute a separate offense. So generally, the property owners, I think, I don't know that he has probably maybe issued probably less than five citations. Generally because we do get compliance. And that's the whole objective of the property maintenance ordinance. In dealing with, uh, the foreclosures, the code enforcement officer uses both the property maintenance ordinance as well as the vacant building ordinance. Um, and I should say, under the, the property maintenance, if there is an imminent, uh, threat to health and, health and safety, there is a summary abatement procedure in there that allows the city to proceed. If it is determined to be a, a significant hazard, um, and it is not precisely defined in the code, it then goes to the city manager, the city attorney, there's a consultation amongst those individuals. They can then determine that we can go in and simply abate the property. And then there's a follow-up procedure outlined in the code as to what, what occurs on, in terms of costs and so forth. Under the vacant building ordinance, um, it is similar, um, but it deals and addresses, I think, more of the issues that are associated with the foreclosures to the extent that the properties are vacant. These are the problematic properties. Um, right now, we have about twelve to fifteen properties that have been posted in the city. And I wanted to bring you a copy. This is a, this is a copy, you can pass around, the notice of violation that is posted on a house, uh, particularly the foreclosures. Um, I'll send you a copy also of the... This was, uh, this was a case that was done just yesterday and you can take a look at it. This one, we cited it both under the, uh, long-term boarded and vacant building ordinance as well as under the, um, uh, property maintenance. And I'll just pass that around, you can take a look at it. All of those notices, the, the red notices posted so that the public can see it, um, the actual notice of violations are posted on the front door. In this case, uh, the problem that we have is generally if there is no way to contact the property owner, if the property has not been listed with a real estate agency, then it becomes very difficult because you go back to the property owner of record. And until a bank steps up to, uh, take action on a, on a foreclosure or someone's walked away from it, um, we are still dealing with the property owner who probably left several months ago. So they're still the owner of record. So until we get some change, the bank steps up, they get involved, take ownership, and then employ the, the use of a local realtor, we have very little chance of, of getting a, a, a success on getting the property abated. In most cases though, over time, they are listed by a real estate agent. Real estate agents have been very cooperative, uh, in, in terms of providing names of the banks who now own the property and code enforcement then follows that avenue back to the owner, which is the, the financial institution informs then, them as to what they're looking at in terms of potential, uh, civil penalties, in terms of fines. And generally, at that point, they then employ somebody to do the, the abatement, whether that's mowing the yard or fixing the fence or what have you. So like I said, we have about twelve to fifteen of those that we're dealing with right now. Um, and we expect that to, to maybe increase slightly through the summer. Um, we don't deal with the fire hazard ones which have been noticed by the, by the CSD simply because that, that, those have already been tasked, they're, they're taking care of it. So this deals with everything outside of weed abatement for fire safety issues. So I don't know if that provides a little bit of clarity?
Yeah, it was, it's a great report, thank you. But specifically, let me be clear on this. Uh, because I've had, uh, several citizens that have called about this. If there is a vacant lot in a residence, and specifically these are in Old Town Galt, so it's not like a new construction area, um, do we have something that would cover a vacant lot? Or do they have to wait till May to get a notice from the fire department?
No, we, we, we have the ability under the property maintenance provisions to address those issues. Um, and there may have been some this year where maybe some of the same concerns. The code enforcement coordinates with fire. If they know that that parcel, a particular parcel, is on the CSD's list, generally, they will let them proceed with it. And, and it's just an issue of timing as to when the abatement occurs. So maybe there was some confusion there. But if there are other properties that, that, uh, for whatever reason are not picked up by the fire, certainly code enforcement will address those.
Okay. Well, there was concern that, you know, because the fire department is restricted to the dry season, basically, that sometimes the weather, like this year for example, doesn't always follow the calendar. And we can get, uh, dead dry weeds in, uh, in April even. But we have to wait until a certain time. So I just wanted to be certain that, um, the city would be able to do something in that, in that situation. And it sounds very clearly that we do have that.
We have the tools to address that.
The tool, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Great, thank you for that report and for clarifying that.
Sure.
My turn? So, we were looking at the-
And you get two minutes, you get two minutes because he took three of yours.
All my time. This'll be thirty seconds. The last meeting, we talked about domain name options for the city's website and we had two different options we were looking at. The first was galt.org, the second was galt.gov. We struck out on both of those unfortunately. They both up for- Well, galt.org, we already knew somebody else owned. We've been trying to work with them on a price and, and the number that they're stuck on is a hundred thousand dollars. Is it a local resident? Yes. No, it's, it's not, it's not local. It's a company that buys these things up and tries to make profits on them. So, we're not anticipating any luck with that, that domain name. The other one is galt.gov and, and the gentleman that spoke addressed the issue of the, the .gov and the new standards that have come out. So you can't get just galt.gov anymore. The new rules basically say that you have, has to be galt and then the state .gov. So it'll be galt, either dash ca.gov or galtca.gov. If you want the .gov at the end. There are other options that we had on that list. I can bring that back at the next council meeting if you want to discuss and review that list again to see what other options are out there. But strictly speaking, those two, the top two that you had, um, selected are, neither of them are available originally. So, I'll, I'll bring it back to the list again at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll move to comments by city council members, uh, vice mayor Payne.
Okay, you know, usually at this time I talk about the meetings I've attended and things like that. But, uh, tonight I wanted to, to not do that and to do something else. Um, this time of the year around Memorial Day, it's always been a tradition that the local VFW and the Women's Auxiliary were very active. And, uh, it makes me sad to know that the local VFW and Women's Auxiliary, uh, are no longer active. And I just wanted to say that, um, I would encourage the people who live in Galt to get more involved in whatever they want to get involved in, but get more involved in the community, whether it's a service club, because we always go to our service clubs when we need donations or we need help. Um, but what I'm seeing with, with many of the service clubs, I'm a Rotarian, is the only people that are left are us old folks. And I fear that we're gonna all fade away and just like many of the service clubs in the past have sort of, uh, gone away, whether it's, uh, the J.C.'s or whatever. So, at this time of the year, when I'm especially thinking of one of those organizations that is no longer here, I would encourage people to try to find a little time to get involved, if not in a service club, in something to give back to the community. It's very rewarding and it's what people love about small towns. It's this caring for one another. So, um, that's my, uh, preaching for the, for the evening and I'll let it go at that.
Okay. Darrell?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Don?
Yes, uh, Councilman Meredith and I met with the Mobile Home Park owners here recently and we had a chance to discuss some of the issues that they're facing. As you've heard, it's already discussed this evening, we're gonna go back and speak with the residents and kinda try to get something here worked out. Also, we, uh, Councilman Meredith and I also met with Greg Halliday, our Director of Public Works regarding the issue of lighting, uh, whether it be residential lighting on the, on the streets and/or, uh, lighting on the homes. This is something we were trying to address. We intend to bring something back at a later date. Uh, we've got some ideas which we think may be helpful, but, uh, we'd like a chance to hash those out and we'll bring them back. Also, I had an opportunity to work at the Strawberry Festival this weekend. If anybody had a chance to go, I hope you did. It was a great time. I, uh, was smart enough to volunteer from one to four on Sunday. I don't have to tell you what that meant. So, it was, uh, it was very, uh, very eventful, but there was, you know, while I sat at one of the gates, it was wonderful, a lot of happy families, a lot of people. Still, I, I felt like it seemed from my gate, we got a lot of people coming through. So, I look forward to volunteering next year. Anybody who couldn't make it this year, I really highly recommend it. It's a great place to go and it's good for the kids. I think, uh, a lot of the kids that showed up there had a good time. And that's pretty much what I've got and I'd like to wish everybody a, a good Monday.
Do you want to do the police report?
Uh, and the police report. Normally I do and I, and I do wanna mention the police report, but I'm not gonna get into the numbers because there's something I wanna point out to people is that during these hard times, especially when you're hearing about, you know, loss of jobs and, and layoffs in other communities, whether it be the, the county or the state, crime tends to go up. And you really need to be conscientious of what's going on around your neighborhood. And if you go out on the website and you take a look at the area, you really should be looking at the types of crimes that are occurring in your neighborhood. One of the easiest ways to deter crime, especially at night, is simply, it's as simple as putting your porch light on, your garage lights. Please, put those lights on. Many times, even in my own neighborhood, because we have, uh, we have burglaries, we have, uh, cars being stolen. But when I drive down the blocks in my own neighborhood, many of the people leave their lights- but when I drive down the blocks in my own neighborhood, many of the people leave their lights off at night. And then they wake up in the morning and something's missing, and they wonder why. It's one of the easiest ways to deter crime. So please, I hope that everybody will take a minute and go out, look at your area, and put your lights on at night. Get a timer if need be.
Hey, Don, before you get off your own subject, I want to say something about that. Because it goes perfectly with what you just said. I wanted to say a special thank you to Noni Garcia, Alex Salido, Mike Singleton, who's here tonight, Terry Esparza, and PJ Gedotti, because we've had some real concern about the area around Harvey Park and Fourth Street, and these volunteers are doing exactly what you're saying. And this isn't their neighborhood. They're coming from another neighborhood to help organize Neighborhood Watch. This is the kind of giving back to the community that we really need. And thank you, Don, for letting me stick my two cents in.
And having said that, and Noni Garcia, for you, those of you who don't know her, Noni's somebody who's been doing this for quite a long time, and she's one of the reasons this program has made a strong comeback. And she's done an excellent job, and now she's helping other neighbors. And so, and they need all the help they can get. So if you're not involved in your Neighborhood Watch, now's a good time to do it, because we need to educate each other, and we need to start looking out for each other.
Andrew?
All right, I have a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first one is Memorial Day 2009. I'll just go ahead and read parts of the staff report that I put together. As you may know, Memorial Day has historically been marked in Galt by an event at the Galt Cemetery hosted by the Galt RNO Cemetery District and the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Unfortunately, as the Vice Mayor just mentioned, our local VFW post was disbanded in the last twelve months, and the VFW subsequently will not be orchestrating the ceremonies this year. A Memorial Day observation is a fixture in this community, and thankfully, someone has stepped up to put together a ceremony at the last minute. To honor this special day in Galt, the Galt RNO Cemetery District will be holding a ceremony at the Galt Cemetery in recognition of the lives of those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the name of their country. To help facilitate this event, I am proposing that council direct Parks and Recreation staff to assist in the setup of the ceremony, and provide, if requested, chairs and tables to better service those in attendance. The City of Galt and Parks and Recreation Director, Boyd Jeffries, has a long history of collaboration in this regard. I ask only that we continue this tradition. In addition, I thought the timing was right to add a new component to Memorial Day activities in Galt. In an attempt to create an activity that appeals to many different portions of our community, yet still bears significant tribute to the men and women in uniform, I am asking council to open City Hall for the community for a day of tribute. With council blessing, we will utilize our new projection equipment in the city council chambers to show three important and entertaining films, free of charge, to the community in honor of Memorial Day. The films that we will be showing have historical significance and speak to the importance of observing this sacred American holiday. Due to the intense nature of the films, no one under the age of seventeen will be admitted without parental escort. And in the staff report, it actually lists the three films, Saving Private Ryan, We Were Soldiers, and Pearl Harbor. But at the recommendation of some members of the community, I would like to alter that, and instead of showing Pearl Harbor, we'll be showing A Bridge Too Far, which is a classic World War II film. So the schedule would be eleven thirty, the first film would start, which would be A Bridge Too Far. Two forty-five would be Saving Private Ryan. Five forty-five would be We Were Soldiers, and the activity would conclude at roughly eight thirty in the evening. This time, I'd be interested to hear any feedback from council.
Have you put any thought into whether you're allowing people to bring you popcorn or soda, or?
Uh, we had actually discussed this, and what we had come up with was we would not allow any food inside of the council chambers.
I think we have a comment from Mark Ernie.
Showing movies, right now, I haven't looked at the issue, but there are issues involved that may be royalties, or what is the city's liability, and actually watching the doors, how about if somebody comes in? Again, we haven't looked at the issue, but I'm concerned that there are issues. I would like the city attorney's office a chance to actually review this before we proceed on showing movies here, just on any type of liability or any type of risk that the city is taking by doing this.
How long would it take your office to issue an opinion?
Our office could look at it this week, absolutely, in the next couple days.
Do we have, I'm just asking, do we have to have a permit of some type to show?
That's exactly what we would have.
Or is that one of the things you're calling for? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Whether there's royalty issues involved, and what's the enforcement like? Are we having, do we need to have police involved? Do we need to have opening the, opening City Hall for such an event?
Well, I think back to other communities that have shown films, like Al Gore's An Inconvenient Truth. I really don't think that it's a problem, but I'm willing to wait and give, I mean, we're really limited on time here, because we're trying to throw this together at the last minute. But we'd need to know in the next forty-eight hours, I think, be able to get out any type of press to promote the event.
We'll definitely take a look at it and issue a memo from the city attorney's office.
But what we would need from council tonight, then, is authorization if the city attorney's office sees it fit to move forward with this event. Council's blessing to go ahead and host it here at City Hall on Monday.
Yeah, although, I mean, I believe it's a great idea, you know, it's honoring the military and their families, but that brings up some very interesting, you know, questions. So I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, personally. Just, I'm sorry, I'm kinda jumping ahead there, but if it can be, if it can be worked out, you know, with the attorney, you come back and says, "We can do it," then fine. You know, I mean, I guess worst scenario is we would come up with a policy that we could do it in the future, too. I understand what you're trying to do.
Andrew, the only question I have is who is gonna monitor the age? Do you have that worked out?
We have volunteers that will be working the door.
That will be there to check it. Will they just check ID, or how?
Well, if they look under the age of seventeen, they're just not gonna let them in. No gray area.
Darrell, did you have?
Well, yeah, I, I, I understand what the intent is, and that's fine, but I think there's a number of unintended consequences here. Not the least of which, I guess, is the one brought up about the copyright issues and fees, or whatever else. I don't think I would support showing R-rated movies, even though it's my understanding the reason of the R-rating is probably the graphic nature of the movie, of, you know, sort of blood and guts type things. I just think a number of people in the community would think, "Well, why are you doing this for something that so many of the children can't attend? You know, find a different movie or something." And it seems out of our protocol to make a decision without getting all five of us with the city people available. We've heard a lot about rushing things and transparency lately. I would think this would have to come back before the council. Let the attorney brief the council in front of the public what the risks and liabilities are. So I would not be supportive of just making a decision based on a pass through memo.
Well, I've been, you know, other than the issue of an R-rated movie, I've been to the schools, elementary schools, when they've had movie night. I mean, I've been to other events where they've showed movies, so I would have no problem with supporting it. Once our attorneys had a chance to look at the issues of, you know, whether it requires a permit. As far as measure, or rather, to having an R-rating, I mean, that would require, you know, anybody coming through the door, being seventeen or older, and/or being escorted by an adult, most likely their parent. So that wouldn't be an issue for me, and I think there's a lot of people out there, especially the seniors, who are more passionate, in many ways, about Memorial Day that would love to be able to come and see these movies. So we, you know, we're more likely to see an older crowd, but at the same time, I think we'll be able to pack the house. So I'd have no problem with supporting it, based on those, based on the attorney's recommendations, so.
Do we have a consensus from council that if the city attorney thinks that we're legally within our right to host this event, we go ahead and do it on Monday, Memorial Day?
I'm just concerned with the timeframe. What, did you say you'd be able to get it months back?
The next forty-eight hours, and it would be by memo to the council and to the city attorney's office, coming through the city manager's office.
Well, then, are you gonna contact the council members and?
Absolutely. It'll be a memo to the council by email, and we'll, we could contact everybody as well.
Well, we can't, we can't vote on it after the fact. You can't send us a memo and have us vote on it.
Correct.
I'm just trying to figure out how to do it.
That's the downfall. The motion would be contingent on the city attorney's review of a hundred percent clearing it and saying, "Yes, it is, it's shown." I mean, it's, it's, without, without the opinion in front of the council, the council's not really making an informed decision, but just making a contingent upon.
Well, I would just add that, you know, I put this in the council packet last Wednesday. So the city attorney knew that this was gonna be on the agenda tonight, and I know you're filling in for him tonight. But I would think that our city attorney is going through the agenda. You know, I gave a pretty detailed description in my report here on what was gonna take place. I would think that our city attorney, if he had any objections, would have addressed them before just showing up tonight and trying to drop a bombshell, you know, five days before the event.
And without, without talking to Steve Rudolph, the city attorney, I, I guess I'm just, I'm just describing my concerns with this item.
Well, I can tell you from the internet, showing a movie in public by someone like ourselves is in violation of the Federal Copyright Act, Title XVII of the U.S. Code. And so, you know, you, you may be granted a permit, but I'm not gonna support it tonight until I have all the facts back from the city attorney.
You have an alternate choice?
Willful infringement of the commercial or financial gain, which there is no financial gain, carries a maximum sentence of up to five years in jail and a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. While I'll admit, I don't suspect that's gonna happen to us, I would not support even putting ourselves at that risk.
I'm a little puzzled as to how many, how so many other municipalities and/or district school districts have been able to have these movie nights and be able to overcome that issue. So I would think that our city attorney would address that.
And I think, weren't you saying that you have to have a permit?
We would be checking in.
And I guess that the school has gotten a permit?
We'd be checking into that, definitely.
We don't know that you have to have a permit.
We don't know that, correct.
Do you have a backup plan, like we could, maybe this time, we could do it? Is there another facility in the community that maybe you could get somebody to do it? And we could work on writing a policy, and, I mean, I think it's something we need to work out one way or the other for the future.
Well, I mean, I think we can come up with something else. I just, I didn't think that there was gonna be so much resistance to just moving forward with this. It's, I mean, we're talking about three war-themed movies. You know, Darrell might not like the fact that they're rated R, but I can tell you from personal experience that war is not a pretty thing. And if we're gonna pay tribute to the men and women that have given their lives in defense of this country, we're not gonna show PG-rated movies that are fluffed up for blockbuster appeal. You know, these are gritty, accurate depictions of what war is like. So.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, other than the fact that I think that timing is the issue here, and I think we need to hear back the vulnerability of the city on something like this. And I, too, would not be comfortable unless the city attorney could give us a clear, "No problem." You know, you're absolutely safe. So that's my concern as well, hearing the idea of the need for copyright agreement, or permit, or whatever. And I would encourage you, Andrew, maybe we could start planning. If this doesn't happen, we could start planning the same thing for next year, where there is plenty of time. And I don't know that the city attorney would necessarily look into this without some direction from the council. I don't know.
We can't move forward with this with an approval under the contingency that it meets all the requirements and the laws are broken?
A motion can be made, but it's, it's, again, you'll, if the memo addresses semi-risk, some risk, or anything like that, unless it's a hundred percent slam dunk, it's okay. The council would be making a decision right now without weighing all, even a little bit of a risk, even a small risk, without weighing that into consideration.
Well, we have staff time, too, to consider. That's a holiday.
For Memorial Day? Well, Boyd has, he's always just donated his own time, so, yeah. I mean, rest assured, I'm gonna make sure that this event happens, whether or not council approves of it tonight or not. I'll find another location to do this at, but if council's not comfortable, we'll just move it somewhere else.
Yeah, and I think some of the churches have projector screens. I'd be willing to help, but I'm afraid to move forward with it at the city's liability.
Okay, what about the issue with Parks Direct Director, Boyd Jeffries? Is council okay with directing him to help out?
Yeah, I think that's great.
No problem with that. If Boyd doesn't have a problem with it. You have people, okay?
You're a good man, Boyd. You're a good man.
Okay, my second item. As council is aware, I recently attended the National League of Cities Congressional Conference. Due to my work schedule during the summer months, I will not be attending any further conferences throughout the year. In recognition of the service of members of our community and the armed forces and the impact that it has on their families, I am asking council to allocate my remaining travel balance of one thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents to the city clerk's office to cover the cost of shipping care packages for service members deployed overseas.
We used to have discretionary funds.
We don't have them anymore.
I know, those went away. Okay, remember, I've only been back a few months. I'm still learning. And we can move funds, right?
We can, uh.
Oh, I guess, can we transfer?
We can transfer these to council's postage budget line item.
Oh, I guess he was trying to get our attention while you and I were talking.
I'm gonna be council member, my best friend, after tonight. I talked to Steve Rudolph earlier today about this item, and the only unresolved issue is whether this would be, let's say, a gift of public funds, because we still have to make the nexus of how it benefits the public of Galt. What's the benefit to the public of Galt whenever Galt money is being used? And I'm sorry, Councilmember, I haven't looked at that issue personally. Again, like I said, I'll be your best friend by the end of the night.
You're working on it.
By saying no. I apologize for that, and I apologize for not being prepared with your answer today. But there is an issue of possibility of gift of public funds that we would have to look into as far as any donations being made by the city, and making a nexus with what the money's being used for and how the city is benefiting from it, how the residents of the city are benefiting from it.
What an option to that might be of assistance, if it is time-sensitive, is that if council agrees that it is illegal use of funds, that council could at least authorize the transfer of funds, so pending the opinion of the attorney, that if it is illegal use, that council action has already been taken. So if you do not anticipate using the travel funds for the remainder of the fiscal year, then we could at least move the monies into postage, and if it is illegal use, then we could certainly already have that available for council expenditure.
And this one, I foresee, it's more of a clear-cut issue of whether it's public, a gift of public funds or not, as opposed to the previous item.
Can we do this right now, Liz, with the Girl Scouts?
Actually, that was the Colonnies Club today.
That will ship in.
They shipped the Girl Scouts cookies. I'd like to tell them about your.
I think there are service clubs. I know Rotary meets on Friday. I'd be willing to ask them to donate. And, you know, we, I think the community would support you. We just sent care packages to Lasoto, Africa. So I, I think if you would like support, I think you could find it.
Well, is council comfortable with moving the twelve hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents into council's postage account to cover the cost of shipping care packages overseas?
I'm comfortable with that.
And it could be, this one would be, again, as pointed out by, pointed out by our finance director, I would recommend that it would be pursuant to, you know, contingent to the city attorney's decision, or the city attorney's opinion of whether this would constitute a gift of public funds or not.
So, Andrew, is this time-sensitive? So I mean, like, we need to. So, Andrew, is this time-sensitive? So, I mean, like, we need to, we wanna try to-
Well, if we're gonna do something for Memorial Day, it's time-sensitive.
You could package them and then, you know, mail them the next week or something.
We can do that.
Yeah. Liz, you wanna talk to the, um, budget for our council travel expense? That we had to take a cut as well and I think we might need to make a little adjustment or else we'd be out of budget, but I think it's a minor.
Well, actually, um, Councilmember Haines asked me if, uh, the money was available in council's travel budget. And although we did take, uh, some savings from council's travel budget, there would still be monies available, the twelve hundred dollars or twelve hundred and some available for the postage. There, there's not, if everybody took all their travel, you know, we did, we did cut some of that because you do have, uh, remaining funds this year. So we did take some of that as savings, but there is, um, at least thirteen hundred dollars in there.
We have a comment from city manager.
I'm having a real hard time sending here a nexus to, uh, to the, to the community. The federal government controls the armed forces. The federal government allows states to exist. States allow cities to exist. I think there's an absolute direct nexus to anyone in the armed forces because they're over there, you know, trying to protect the United- I got a feeling when they get into it, they're gonna find the nexus and it shouldn't be a big issue. I, I don't see how you could not get around that. I mean-
Well, I have no problem with what we wanna do or what Andrew wants to do.
I have any pro- problem with it either, but also I would like to add my two cents to Liz. I believe I have twelve hundred dollars as well approximately left and I'd like you to add my twelve hundred dollars in with Andrew's, uh, in covering the shipping costs of care packages for the service members deployed to the war in Iraq. And if, and if you would please, once, you know, of course, it's contingent, uh, to the city attorney's opinion, but I'm sure it'll come back to the nexus. You know?
I think we've got a consensus now, so I just wanted to throw this in here. You know, at a lot of, a lot of times when we put items on the agenda, um, I, I know it's difficult for staff to foresee what's coming and that's why in the last six months, I've gone to great lengths to write these detailed memos attached to my council agenda items. And I would just hope that in the future, if issues like this are gonna come up, that they're addressed before we show up on council night without any preparation.
There's an issue that the council needs to address though. Uh, they, they're not supposed to do work if it takes more than two hours. And so, what I would tell Councilman Meredith is usually, I think, the reason the attorney does, and he's waiting to see whether or not the council says, "Yes, this makes sense and go ahead." If the council wants him to review every memo that every council person, then they need to tell him to do that. But, but if, if it takes a significant amount of time, the council has to authorize him in order to extend it.
But I remember when we negotiated, uh, the contract when we hired our new city attorney, that there was actually a timeframe built into his, his contract to review the agenda prior to the meeting. Is that correct? It, it's actually listed.
Yeah.
So, we're already paying for him to review it. So, do you understand what I'm saying, Ted?
Yeah, but that's, it's a separate because he reviews the staff. The council's a different animal because it takes all of you to approve. What's going on here? What I'm trying to say is usually he won't go into that detail unless they approve the issue. Cause you're asking him to do something that, that the council hasn't approved. I mean, if the council wants him to review it, they, uh, each one that comes through, they need to say, "Yeah, it's okay to do it."
Can I review this? I have the, there's a consensus to Councilmember Haines and Councilman Meredith's savings for postage contingent upon a legal opinion. Is that okay?
Andrew, you probably know, how many, uh, young men and women do we have in our community that's in the military? I, I figured you probably knew.
Oh.
Approximate, I'm just-
I can tell you when I was deployed overseas, I received a, a care package from the Galt Herald and I think Rachel had told me at the time that there was twenty, she had twenty families that they sent care packages to, so.
And we probably still have about the same.
Probably. And thank God that no one from this community has fallen in the line of duty since, uh, these new wars have taken place. But, you know, I think we have a community that embraces those families, so.
Andrew, do you want to continue the rest of what you had suggested to, any money that wasn't used at this time would stay in a fund to be used?
Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
In the future.
If any funds remain after the event, I would like to direct the city clerk's office to continue to utilize these funds in the same manner on a first-tom, first-sir basis until they are depleted.
Meaning that if other council members come and they have an endeavor or something like this, then we could do that?
Well, meaning that if, uh, on Memorial Day at the event, we don't put together enough care packages to deplete the fund, the city clerk's office can allow community members to come into the clerk's office and ship packages free of charge to soldiers deployed overseas until the money's done.
Specifically for care packages?
Overseas, yes. We'll direct the city clerk's office that all packages that would be eligible for this would have to be addressed to an APO address, which is the overseas addresses for our deployed troops.
Through June thirtieth.
When the budget's over.
That's all I've got. You have the direction? Okay. Well, I attended the Strawberry Festival, the Chamber of Commerce. They have their opening and Running of the Berries and I don't know whether Jason would like for me to share his adventure or he would like to. I was out there before you.
It was quite a unique experience, dressing up like a berry. I brought my two little, little kids, a two-year-old and a four-year-old and I was out there running with little kindergartners, Jason after me, trying to pull the black, uh, seeds off my costume and they knocked my-
That can be tough.
Fell down at one point, they all jumped on top of me and my little two-year-old son started crying cause I thought the little kindergartners were beating me up.
Yeah, that, that berry down and the medics came and got him.
Right. It was fun.
Okay. Well, we'll call, uh, into the meeting at, gee, what, nine forty?
Eight.
Or eight?
Eight, eight forty.
Wow, eight forty. Eight forty-one. I missed it.
Good night, Daryl.
Good night.
Take care.
Yeah, I will. Bye-bye.